...an explorer of what belief means.
Yeah, I'm glad you said doubter because my religious tradition has always accepted doubt as part of the procedure of believing in God. And I think doubt becomes a kind of protection against extremism. But religion is under assault right now from various places. There's something called a new atheism in the air that's coming into the country. And it has a dogmatism to it that doesn't quite understand that religion itself has within it disbelief, that there is in the religious life, what shall they say, seasons of belief and doubt.
One's not either a believer or not.
That's right. It's the composite of that life that seems to me to be the prayer.
So to the extent that, as you say, many of your friends are not believers, probably many of the readers would not be believers. What do you want us to take from this?
Well, I want you to at least acknowledge, at a time in which the world is afire with religion, that you may tell me that you're not a believer, but you better consider what belief is. And it seems to me that we better at least know what is going on in the world. We're living in a world that's increasingly disconnected from place. We're living in a world that's using cell phones like this as a way of losing a sense of place, where we're not even buried anymore. We put our ashes at the side of a lake or on a mountain or something. The wind blows it away. We no longer inhabit cemeteries, are dead. We no longer visit the dead in cemeteries. It seems to me, at a time in which we are losing a sense of place, that what I would like my reader to understand is that place is central to religion. And the other part of this book that I wanted readers to have, and this is why Darling is the center chapter of the book, is that my relationship to women, particularly heterosexual women, is both--
As a gay man.
As a gay man, is crucial to my formation. I dedicate the book to the Sisters of Mercy, an Irish Order of Nuns who educated me. They were fiercely determined that I would become this American man that you listen to. In fact, they were the precursors, in my judgment, the real beginning of my own emancipation out of the closet, came with women in the 19th century, those nuns, but also the women, the doer of processions of women in European streets, in the capitals, marching for the vote, the suffragettes. That becomes the crucial theme in this book, not the gay man trying to find his place in the desert religions, but women. Where are women going to play, what role are they going to play in this theological battle?
All right, there's a lot more I want to talk to you about, especially about the art of the essay. We'll do that in our online section of this. But for now, the new book is Darling, A Spiritual Autobiography, Richard Rodriguez. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Jeff.
You guys all set?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening. We'll call the November 7, 2013 Planning Commission to Order. We have the roll, please.
Commissioner Welsh.
Here.
Commissioner Graves.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
And Chairperson Ruth.
Here.
Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's meeting is broadcast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel Eight, and it's also recorded to be replayed at 12 noon on the Saturday following this meeting, on Community Channels 71 and Comcast Channel 25, and they can also be viewed on the city's website. Our technician tonight is Victor Herman, and as a reminder, I need to do this myself. If you could please turn off your cell phones during the meeting, and if you come up to the podium to speak, if you could sign your name so we have it for the record. Oops, we can't set that there either.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. Okay, so our first item on the agenda are oral communications. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And that brings us to public comments, Item 2B. These are for communications from any member of the public for items that are not on the agenda. Is anyone wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing no one, we'll go to Item C. Any Commissioner comments? None here? None there? Okay, moving right along. Staff comments?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
No comments there, okay. That brings us to Item 3A, the approval of the minutes from the October meeting. Are there any additions or corrections?
None. I move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? One abstention? Two abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to Item 4, the consent calendar. These are items that are considered by the Planning Commission to be routine, will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. No separate discussion unless someone wants to pull these items, or this item, tonight, since there's only one for discussion. Anyone wishing to pull this item? Anyone in the audience wishing to discuss this particular item? Seeing no one, then, this is a master sign program for 106641st Avenue. Is there a motion to approve?
I would so move second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to public hearings. We have one public hearing tonight, and our procedure is as follows. We'll have a staff presentation on this item. We'll have public discussion, Planning Commission comments, close the public portion of the hearing, and the Planning Commission discussion, and ultimately a decision. So we are at Item 5A, which is 110 Loneway, and this is a conceptual review for a second story addition to a single-family home in the CV zoning district. Katie?
Okay, thank you, Chairman Ruth. Good evening, Commissioners. Before you, tonight is a conceptual review of the home at 110 Loneway. We brought this to you as a conceptual review because the applicant has an interest in putting a second story addition to a home in Loneway, and the guidelines specifically speak against the addition of floor area in this district or the addition of height. So rather than bring forward the coastal permit application and the full design permit application, we thought it would be best to come to you first to get some guidance. Currently, the home at 110 Loneway is a single-story cement block home with a flat roof. There's a roof deck with a wrought iron railing around it. There's a single front door, large aluminum casement windows on each side, and there are no windows on the side elevation facing the old North Loneway. 110 Loneway is in the Six Sisters Loneway Historic District. As you can see, the black boundary around the edge is the boundary of the Historic District. There's some outlier buildings that you can see the corners have been cut because they do not contribute to the district. Within the boundary, there are 22 units, several of which are duplexes. Seventeen are contributory and are the dotted units shown in the ahead. And then there are also five non-contributory structures, and two of those units are the central, the two units within the Six Sisters that were reconstructed. And 110 is one of the non-contributory structures within the Loneway portion of the district. There are two-story homes within the district. The first one is at 132 Loneway, and it's non-contributory. The one at 104 Loneway is contributory. I didn't find the exact date of construction, but it's believed to have been built, the addition to it, in the 1920s. So that was, it was an in-period addition, so it is significant to the time period, and it was built during the Frederick Hayne Camp Capitola era. On this next slide, we'll discuss the character-defining elements of the district. There's a public lawn with sidewalks on either side. Single-story cottages make up the Loneway portion of the district, with two-story buildings within the Six Sisters portion. The exterior materials are a mix of plane wood shingles extending from the roof eaves to lap siding wainscot. And then on the duplexes, there's mostly wood lap siding, single-hung encasement windows throughout, and front and side gabled roofs. This is a historic photo. The character-defining elements, again, are repeated here of single-story duplexes with parallel front gabled roofs. This setting is very important to this district, with the lawn being a community, a shared community space, and no thoroughfare for the automobile. This photo is from 1947, and there's evidence of change in the district. You can see the corner duplex has been removed. I'll use the pointer here. You can see it right here on the edge, and a new building was introduced. That home, this building is not within the district when the district was set in the 80s. And there's also, you can also see the second story addition to 104 Loneway, right here. And also is the historic home as it, you can see the front facade before 110 Loneway was removed and replaced with the structure that's there today. And the original home had paralleled front gabled roof and a front porch element. This is, gives you the current context with the two-story Six Sister buildings in the front, and then as it extends back into the Loneway portion, single-story homes. And just why I'm bringing that up is because when you have infill development within a historic district, you really want to look at the mass and scale and how your infill influences that mass and scale and the overall aesthetic of the experience of the district. So within the village design guidelines, the Loneway Residential Overlay District, there are four specific guidelines for this area within your central village district guidelines. And the one that we'd like to discuss tonight is no structure shall increase in the habitable area of the existing unit. The height of the structure shall not be increased to add additional stories to the structure. And the applicant has brought forth two concepts, one being a two-story element in front of In this design concept, the applicant had a stamped set of plans that was approved, I'm not sure exactly what year, but 20-so years ago was my understanding. And I had no documentation of that in the planning files, but it did have a stamp on it. But any application after two years, our code currently says you have to come back in and reapply, so it's not valid. And then during the design review process, the Arkansas site meeting, this second concept was shown to the group. The Carol, the historian, had a preference for this second option. The two-story building may comprise, I'm sorry, compromise the aesthetic of the surrounding historic resources in district was her take on the option number one. She preferred the one-and-a-half option, but has uncertainty about the introduction of a shed roof and deck. The streetscape, she requested the streetscape because we didn't have this concept, too, within a streetscape to understand its impact on the district. So in your packet, you received the streetscapes of both concepts. And also, at the time of review during Arkansas site, that the second-story shed roof was a little more narrow, it wasn't as wide, and there weren't as many windows during her review. So this is the streetscape, and it's showing the current condition, the two-story option, and also the story and one-half option. And this is the side view of the building and how it relates to the Loneway portion of the district around it. And just to point out one thing of staff concern with the one-and-a-half story is the height of this wall here, how tall it is compared to the height of these buildings, and it raises the roof line, the ridge line, much higher than the existing buildings within the district. So a thought to keep in mind when we're looking at the guidelines and talking about future decisions in this district. There's a long history, which I'm sure some of you are familiar with, about why this occurred. In 1964, there was a lot of flooding that took place. I guess the beach was taken away because of changes along the shore, and the village, my understanding is the home there was condemned, and then the fire marshal at the time wanted it to be rebuilt to meet fire standards. And there was also a major debate going on within the city about whether or not single-family homes should be part of this area, or if it should really be a resort-based area and only allow multifamily. So there was a lot of minutes there. I didn't put that in your packet, but if you'd like additional information, I can provide that. But there is a long history there. So tonight, we're looking for guidance, and would like to know, get some direction from the Planning Commission regarding the guidelines and habitable area and additional stories. I think we should start there. And if, we'd like to talk about the two-story option, the one-and-a-half story option, and then if there's time, if we could also talk about fiber cement board and vinyl clad in the district, and if that would be okay for materials for a non-contributory structure in the district. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Katie? Not here. Katie, I just have one. I know the village guidelines were adopted in 1987. Have there been any amendments to those since that time that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And if a person was coming in to make an application, where would they find those village guidelines? I looked online and couldn't find, I could find a reference to the Capitola Village guidelines, but I couldn't find any reference specifically to the Loneway guidelines in the zoning ordinance.
They're within the Capitola Village guidelines.
Okay, so that's where you'd have to look, huh?
Yep.
Because I just know, I'm aware of some information that was given out to a Loneway property owner that it would be okay to add a second story. And actually, he went so far as to hire an architect and pay for plans to be designed based on that. So I'm just curious as to, you know, why that wasn't caught at that time, which was before your time, but we'll figure that out, I guess, at time. So no questions, then?
No. But can we discuss that when we, after we get through the audience part?
Sure. I guess to the point, but it's not on the agenda.
Well, it is, because the staff report specifically talks about a historical district that includes the Six Sisters plus an overlay for Loneway. And I think your question is pertinent, because, you know, when you go to the zoning ordinance, there is no reference to either of those, really. And then, but they appear as documents that were approved but never codified, so to speak.
Can I clarify on that? So I did look at the zoning ordinance today to make, to see how this is codified, and within the development regulations, one of, it's right after the purpose statement, and when you get into the context of height amassing. Prior to that, in the development context, it does say, and I don't have the specific language in front of me--
It mentions--
--that the Central Village District guidelines do apply to all development within the village, Central Village, and that's in the CV district. And then when you go into these guidelines, that's where the Loneway, there's specific, the special areas, specific guidelines for each of the special areas within the district.
You're making my point exactly. Okay, we'll discuss it later.
Okay.
Okay. Well, if there's no further questions for staff, then we can ask as the applicant present, and we'll give you the first chance when we open, as we open the public hearing.
Good evening. I appreciate our opportunity. This is a really unique, as you--
And could you identify yourself?
Gary Lindicki, I'm sorry. It's unique property in Loneway District, as you can see. And as Katie has mentioned, the property was condemned. The Kettmans leveled the property, and through reconstruction of the property, the fire marshal dictated that the structure that you see today be built. So that was through city guidelines and a mandate by the city to construct a center-block building with fireproof windows, fireproof doors, and this is what you see today. This wasn't what they envisioned when they demoed the existing structure to rebuild their property, but it was dictated by the city. They've enjoyed the rooftop deck ever since the rebuilding of the project, so it is a habitable area that they enjoy on a regular basis. And what they're trying to do is, their ideal would be to add the second story, as it had been approved. It was a Doug Messini design, and I'm sure you're all familiar with Doug Messini. And there's also the, I'm glad you left the current picture up, the far left of projection is a Doug Messini design. It also shows those two far-left structures are two-story buildings. The Kettmans would like to build the two-story structure that was approved back. And again, I'm not quite sure what the date is myself. They did have a job copy, they did have a permit for that project. And as a section, second option, and to try to maintain the character of Loneway would be to do the one-and-a-half story, providing that the deck is included. That's a big element here from the Kettman standpoint. I think this would be a nice way in order to achieve some consistency within the historic district. Again, this is, this is the white elephant in Loneway. I think there would be no disagreement in that. And from Mrs. Kettman's standpoint, this is something that, one, the structure's going to stay in, that the house is going to stay in the family for a long period of time, and this is something she'd like to do for the family in her lifetime. So I'd like to get some feedback. Again, I know this is a unique situation in a unique area of Capitola. So if there's any questions, I might be able to answer for you as well.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Lindicki? Done? Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Loneway? Seeing no one, then we'll close the public portion and bring it back to the Planning Commission. Any comments, questions?
I have quite a few comments. I think the last speaker, though, characterizing that the city came up with the Kettman design was really the fire department, and the fire department's never been in the city. It's always been a fire district, and we attempted to take it over at one time, it never did. Having said that, I guess I'm a little bit concerned with how this was presented, and this is no reflection on staff, but if you look at the historic district, all of the Six Sisters are two stories. Plus, we've allowed some recent remodels. The one that affronts, or comes, has its side on San Jose Avenue was redone just within the last 10 years, and it was expanded considerably in the upstairs area. Because if you look at the old photographs that you had up, remember when it had the little shed protrudeens out of, out on the little alleyway behind Loneway and between, the alleyway that's behind El Toro Robles?
Between the sisters.
Yeah, between the two. And when they remodeled that Six Sisters that's on the corner of San Jose Avenue and the Espinade, it was increased in size. It's not that one. It's the one you see right there, the first one. And you see the little shed roof in the back there? That is now a full room enclosed, and it was allowed. So I had some difficulty with the staff explanation, and then I realized that, because that came after the '87 regulations. Then I am familiar with the two pictures that were shown of the two two-stories on Loneway. Longway that are immediately adjacent to San Jose Avenue. They look like one building, but they're two separate units there. And I am also familiar with people, as Mick said, that have come into the city over the years with the idea of going to two stories, and were kind of told that they could, and they never did. One of them never did, anyway. Then, of course, the old French House is a two-story down closer to Monterey Avenue. It's the one that's a totally shingled building. It's the second or third house in from Monterey on the north side of Longway. They showed it in one of your photographs here. So there have been two stories in this district. We've allowed two stories in this district. But I heard some things in this report that I've never heard before, and I want to get to that. This idea of contributory and non-contributory, you know, I had a hard time finding out, I mean, what somebody was thinking to come up with that kind of way of explaining it. And I'm having trouble with the application tonight, because you're asking us to violate something that's been approved by giving conceptual approval to go ahead with plans. Normally, you would come in and change the guidelines or the overlay district, and then he's shaking his head, no, so I'm wrong on that. But I'll hear your explanation of that, because that's what we've always done in the past year in City Capitola. The idea of conceptually saying, we're going to allow somebody to break the rules, or, you know, bend the rules, whatever you want to call them. I've said all this, but the thing that I, the reason I wanted to make some comments, I think what's being proposed in the story and a half, or whatever you want to call it, is conceptually, if you want to use that word, better than the brick houses there now. I mean, it's a, it's rebar and blocks, you know, with cement board inside of it, and it looks like heck. And this will be a very attractive addition. I think that that particular plan lends itself best to the community without changing the standards of the community. I just, I'm baffled by the process. I'll stop at that.
Mr. Graves, the conceptual review process, to the best of my knowledge, has been in place for several years. It allows applicants an opportunity to present plans and ideas to the Planning Commission or City Council, if they choose, to get a read on, you know, major issues and where the appointed and elected officials might want to go with something before they expend a lot of money. In this case, the applicant chose to do that. We thought it was a good idea, given that there was a conflict with guidelines. And, you know, I think it's worth pointing out that they are guidelines. It's not an ordinance. It's not the general plan. But nonetheless, they do carry some weight. We want to generally follow them. So that was something that we think the Planning Commission has the discretion to make a decision, and it would be beneficial to the applicant to give them some kind of guidance on whether they should pursue this and spend the time and money, or if it's something that just is going to be a dead end for them. So that was kind of the thought process behind it.
I understand exactly what you said. It kind of disappoints me that we spend lots of bucks doing guidelines. We have the 41st Avenue guidelines. We have the Capitola Village guidelines. We now have an overlay district on Longway, and we've got something for the Six Sisters. But they're, they never get incorporated into the law. They're just guides. So it's like, say, well, this is what we'd like to have, but we're never going to enforce it, and we're going to come in with some conceptual design. And I'm not against this project. I want you to say that. It just, it baffles me why we would spend that much time on guidelines, because I can remember when we developed the village guidelines. I can remember when we developed the 41st Avenue guidelines.
But Ron, look at the corollary. I think if, I think if this had been incorporated into an ordinance, you wouldn't have the flexibility down there to even deal with this building tonight. And now you have an opportunity to bring this building into probably more resembling the historical character of Longway, because they are guidelines, and we can make some changes to those guidelines. It gives us some flexibility. So I think, I think that's beneficial, rather than having them incorporated into a rigid ordinance.
I don't disagree with you with this one application, but if you apply that to all planning in the City of Capitola-
Well, now, but now you're broadening the issue, because we're not talking about all planning in the city.
But you're talking about guidelines not being made specifically part of ordinances, and I'm, that's what I'm talking to. I think there is a process, even if this was in an ordinance form, to bring this project forward. It wouldn't be as fast as it is tonight, and I don't see anybody here complaining about it. And you don't hear me complaining about the project, because I'm not. I'm just saying it's kind of spinning our wheels from making guidelines if we don't make some teeth to them.
Okay. Any other comments, Gail?
Directly related to that comment, I actually think this is a really good way to bring this forward, because it saves the applicant a lot of money going through a full review, like we would normally go through. You know, when an applicant really wants something, and they approach the staff and they say, you know, we really want to do this project, and staff says, look at these guidelines. This really doesn't work. You know, it's not going to work. And they come back and they say, we don't care. We really want to do it. Staff tries to help them out and says, okay, let's take the less expensive, you know, less drastic move, go in for a conceptual first, see where you go, tread, get in there and get, get your feet wet in the waters. That's exactly what this kind of process, this particular application, it's not even an application, this particular topic tonight, is exactly what that kind of thing has been developed for. And I think this is a really good use for it.
The only argument I would have is this, under both my suggestion and this process, there's no money spent until you know that you can do it. Because you don't go out and do, you don't go out and do plans if the ordinance says no, you can't do it.
You don't have to do building plans, but you'd have to do more than they did for this application, by far, for us to see it as an actual, you know, permit to do it.
Basically, they could add, if this were in the ordinance, they could add some siding and maybe change the windows, and that's it.
Right.
That would be it.
So I have a question for everybody, and just a little straw pull. I mean, is it, is it my interpretation that we, as a city, want to keep this as an historic district? Is that, is that safe in saying, or is there anybody that doesn't feel that way on this commission? Okay. So if we want to keep this an historic district, then we need to understand, in order to make any kind of determination, whether it's conceptual or not, I believe this commission needs to understand what we need to maintain in that district to make, to keep it historic. Because there's this chipping away thing that the state talks about that happens, that is, that is, can be very detrimental, and a city can get themselves, get their designation taken away from them without even knowing it, because they've just piddled away over the years. I'm not saying this particular project would do that. But you wanted to know what the terms conforming and non-conforming are.
No, no, it was-
Contributing and non-contributing. Those are state terms. Those are, those are state historic terms. And, and what it means is if there is enough, there's a balance there, and if there's enough non-conforming in this district, they'll take it away. So I'm not saying, this is already non-conforming, so we're, there's nothing lost here. But I'm, what I then want to say is, if we decide we want to, and everybody seems to want to get rid of this unfortunate structure, we need to make findings or figure out a way so that this is an extraordinary, it will never bring it into contributing. There's no way we can do that. Even if it looks like it's contributing, it will never be able to go back to contributing. But at least it will look good. Now, maybe we can make a finding for this particular project that says, you know, we can make an exception without it affecting other contributing structures in that district adversely over the long run. But I do want to say that I am concerned about the massing of this, even the, even the half-story, the other half-story. I'm really concerned about that massing in that district.
You know, you talk about historic districts, and I can think of things that the state has chimed in about historically here in Capitola. One being the old Heen Building, the Redding Building on the corner of Stockton, excuse me, Monterey and Capitola Avenue. But I've never seen them really say a lot about a district, more or less, it, when things are thought to be historic and we, the only other time we've ever dealt with in the state was with the, with the Sixth Sister that wanted to remodel. And remember the comments at that time? I remember very clearly. They wanted us not to make the new addition to the back of that Sixth Sister look like the Sixth Sister. And to me, that tells me that the state shouldn't come down and give guidelines in Capitola.
The state's reason for doing that is so that when historians come-
Well, I understand the reason.
Well, maybe everybody else doesn't. When this, when historians come, or people come later on, 10 years, 15 years, 50 years down the road, they can see the history of that building based on the different additions. And they'll say, this addition is, you can clearly see that this addition was made back in 2013, when they, da, 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 and that's the reason they do that. And I think it's a really good, even though it sounds cockeyed in some ways, I think it's a, it results in very understandable architecture in the long run. And I, for that reason, I support that state policy.
Linda, any comments?
You know, I have some comments, and I'm going to go a bit out on a limb, I think. I think the staff did a really great job on snatching this one and bringing it to us, because conceptually, I think that the applicant does need to hear, you know, what the current mindset is of, and council needs to hear what the current mindset is. And I don't know if this will go to council. I guess that's a question I should have asked, if, as a concept, no, it just comes to us. Okay.
Can I piggyback? Can they appeal? If we turn this down, can they appeal the conceptual to the council?
There is no decision tonight, so it's just getting guidance from you. You don't have an application in front of you, so we would not take it to the City Council.
And I think it's controversial enough that it's a good discussion for us to have as well, at this stage of the game, before there's, you know, a lot of money behind it. Because if we don't like it, there, there are a lot of aspects of the design that they could address before they do, you know, bring it back. So that, I really, I applaud it coming that way. And I think this is a perfect example, in my mind, of the perfect storm, where you have good intentions of city leaders colliding with good intentions of individual property owners. And the result back in 1964 was something that nobody today really goes and says, that is a beautiful building. However, it tells a story. And it tells a story that's almost 50 years old. And it tells a story about Capitola that, when I first moved here, I was really intrigued to understand why we are so hard on people that want to come in and remodel a house. And my concern resulted in an exhibit that Carolyn put together, trying to explain it to me. And now I walk around Capitola, and I see buildings like this, and it, it drives home the fact that Capitola went through a really difficult period back in the 60s, and we nearly lost our character. And it was saved because the community rose up and said, we're not going to let this happen all over town. And there, there's a lot of emotion behind that in a lot of different areas. And this particular unit is one that, you know, God bless the family that lived through all of that. And now we've got a structure that tells a bit of a story, but it's not, it's in a district, but it's not a contributing structure. So it can be modified. It can be changed at this point. And you've got buildings just outside the district that got changed before the district, and they got outside the district. So it draws some real lines in, how do we maintain our character and, at the same time, apply the rules equally across Capitola? So I think it's something that we really need to think about. We need to really understand what happened and how it happened, and all the good intentions of the people that wanted Capitola to be nothing but big hotels, and how it changed the development to a point where now we've, we've kind of put ourselves in a box trying to deal with it. Having said all of that, in 1987, we tried to formalize how we were going to protect our character. And that's where the guidelines came up. That's where we went and spent all this money to have these districts identified. And as a historic district, it means a lot more than just preservation at this point. There are tons of ramifications to losing the historic district designation that are really far-reaching. And understanding how we jeopardize that is something that I agree with you, we've got to understand, so that we can keep from jeopardizing the designation of, as a historic district. As I understand it, the district has a character, and when you walk through the district, you need to feel the character of what that district represents historically. And we can't make changes that will destroy that feeling as you walk through. What, what does it look like? What does it feel like? Does it feel like hodgepodge, or does it feel uniform and, and out of the same materials and all that good stuff? This, specific structures in a real prominent location. So either, even though it's not a contributing structure, it is in a prominent location, so it's, it matters what it feels like. The other thing we need to understand is the impact, if this one goes to a second story, then what about the next one? How do we, how do we allow this one to break the rules, if you will, and not the next one? We need to make a finding that says this one's unique in a, in a specific and documentable way.
Unique.
Unique. And something that Gary said that I wrote down as a question, does the rooftop deck, is that habitable space? It's usable, but is it habitable? And adding a roof to that, would that change the habitable space of the, the structure? I think that pretty much said what I wanted to say. I think there's a lot of questions. If the, if the design of this, and this is just my comment, looking at the design, if the design of the story and a half, or the, the two-story, either one, were more like the original structure before it was torn down in 1964, I would personally like it a lot better. The roof lines running parallel to the sidewalks, I think, are better than the way that this one is structured. This one, the massing is much larger, but I think if you, if you redesigned that second floor, maybe you could make a finding that it's, it's more in the character of the district. So-
You know, you make great points. I just did a history. This wasn't the only house that was affected when we had the floods and the rest of it. If you remember, and we all know, it's right across the street here, just the other side of the trestle, there were five bungalows between the trestle and where the laundromat was in those days. And they all had what they called mudsills for foundations and the rest of it. They were destroyed, and Ed Newman has his offices there today. So you're right. That's what brought on the village plans and stuff like that. People got tired of seeing new buildings taking over these bungalows and what Capitola was. And you're probably right, every time we create a two-story. My problem is that I don't, I don't disagree with you with regards to the mass. I don't want to design somebody's home for them, because all of a sudden, we get a pink elephant or something, because it suits you, but it doesn't suit me or something. Of the two plans, all I was trying to say, if we're going to allow some work on this structure that we all agree doesn't conform to anything down there, of the two proposals that we got, I like the one that's, the bottom one up there. It makes more sense. I absolutely agree with you. The roof lines could be redesigned with the gables going in the opposite direction. A lot of things could be done.
And I think at a, at a conceptual review, that's the kind of input that they're really asking us for. I mean-
Yeah. I really believe we need the state's input on this. The state's more than happy to talk to us about this kind of thing. If we were to, to send them this application or these, this proposal, the state will talk to our staff about how that fits in, does it fit in, what they have to do to make it fit in, suggestions. I mean, there, there are a wealth of information, and they're more than, many, many times in the past, our staff has called the State Historic Preservation, the Office of State Historic Preservation- and they are right there for you. And I don't think we should go any further without getting some, getting it from the horse's mouth.
Could we stop so I can give TJ a chance here?
Sure.
There's obviously a lot of opinions here, and I'm all for the historical, the look and feel, and let's bring back the ski ball and carousel that I remember. But having said that, well, there is one thing I think we'll all agree on, the fact, don't let the fire department do design, ever. It's not gonna burn, I can tell you that, but it's, but design's a whole different thing. And with regard to the story, two-story or half-story, I know I would have a very difficult time supporting the two-story. I don't really have an issue so much with the historical fulfillment of this, even though it's in the historic area, and I understand Linda's, it all tells a story, but so did the original structure. And I think if we could bring some of that back. And I think, and I had a very difficult time, it sounds like what others did, trying to tie this into our ordinance and really where are our boundaries. But this thing, this central village district guidelines actually gives us a little bit of flexibility, which I think is good. And I think really this is what the planning commission, this is what we're here for, is to try to work through some of these gray areas, it's not quite so black and white. Otherwise, staff could just issue a permit and be on with it. But in the document where it says, "Finally, there are existing structures in the village that detract from the overall appearance. Opportunities to remove, replace, or remodel these structures will enhance aesthetic enjoyment of the community. In short, responding to these issues and guiding changes to the physical design of the village in a way that maintains and enhances its visual and aesthetic qualities is a considerable challenge." And it is a challenge, but I think this is one of those opportunities where it distracts from the rest of the village area, and I think we have an opportunity here. Having said that, that doesn't necessarily mean that I support either the half-story. I like what Chairman Ruth said, put some new siding on it and we can make it look like it. And I like the small gable roof, but I guess we need to get some direction on where we go from here with that.
Thank you, TJ.
I think you really hit it on the head when you characterize the sixties, because I know Ron and I were here at that time, and we were on the council, Ron was on in sixty-eight, I got on in seventy-one, but I was active in that sixty period. And we saw what was going on in the community. And when the council changed, there were numerous ordinances and these guidelines, the general plan was redone to reflect the community's will to try and preserve the village area. And I think what we've done over the years is we made things so restrictive, we almost painted ourselves into a corner. And in that process, I think we've discouraged a lot of renovation in the village. I'm not saying change the character of the village, but I think we've discouraged people from fixing up their buildings and making appropriate changes down there that would enhance the character of the village. So, and I think that's the reason we have these really four very tight restrictive conditions on Lawn Way is because it reflected the fear of what had been happening prior to that. So my feeling on this is they're probably a little restrictive, I think. But I think we have to handle them, as you said, on a case-by-case basis. And this is a case that I think certainly cries out for some renovation and changes to make it more characteristically historical, to fit in there. And I think in doing that, I personally, I like the half-story one because I think the pitch on the roof is more characteristic of the surrounding buildings there. But I like Gail's idea of having a finding in there that whatever we decide only applies to this particular building, and it's not precedent-setting for anything else. So I, if you're looking for a preference, I prefer the story and a half, but I would also like to see the siding match perhaps the French's buildings there, something from that particular period of the construction. I don't know about applying to the state or asking the state, but that just, to me, that just seems like it would open up a can of worms, it would drag this process out for months and years.
But this is exactly where cities and counties get themselves into trouble, because that's, they don't want to do that because they're worried about what's gonna happen. But then, down the road, they wish they had because all of a sudden, it's not a historic district in the state's eyes anymore. And they're the ones who certify it as historic. And, you know, what if we got-
Has this district been certified?
I'm not so-
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not so sure we-
What'd you gain from that? What does the city gain from having it certified as an historical district?
There's tax incentives for property owners being part of a historic district. So it is part of the Secretary of Interior for the national parks, it's on the National Register of Historic Places.
And it also gives us teeth to keep it looking the way it looks. You know, it may be, may very well be, they say a story and a half on this particular property is fine. And my experience is that's not one of the state departments that really gets you all muckled up and takes a whole long time. I know Catherine Gualtieri could speak to this a little bit more eloquently, but I know she would recommend the same thing, and I'm channeling her right now. I feel like, you know, she's in my ear saying, you know, this is not something that I think we are skilled enough to know.
And I don't think that the state is skilled enough to know what the citizens of Capitola want. And that's my problem.
That's not really the point.
But it is. We have historical districts in Santa Rosa that I've visited. It looks like it stands out like nothing else. It's almost as bad as this building on Lawn Way. The whole district is, but it's a district. And I don't think that's what the flavor of Capitola is, especially the village. I think the village is a mix. There's Lawn Way, there's Mediterranean down there with the Venetian courts, there's all kinds of stuff down there.
I think they recognize that. I know they recognize that.
And the idea that you can't, I see going to the state on this building with any of your ideas, and we're gonna say, "Well, we can't make it look like what it did before it was tore down because we have to show that this came later." Because that's what they tell us every time. That's my experience with the Six Sisters, that I voted to have remodeled on the corner there and the rest of it. And I'm sorry, I don't have the faith in the state that you do. I'm sorry. Everything else I agree with. And I think if they're looking for the idea of a concept here that, "Do we want to do something with this ugly building?" My answer is yes. I think the concept idea's good. I don't want to design it for them, though. And I don't want the state designing it.
So how do we make findings for a second, for expanded capacity? I know we can make findings that they can, you know, tear it down and do something different with it, but I'm not sure how we make findings for a larger home, given that this doesn't look like we want it to. That doesn't seem like it leads to a finding.
Maybe we could do a floor-area ratio or something that, and have a special definition.
Well, I'm not sure you have to make a finding, because these are simply guidelines.
What I'm hearing is that Gail would like to make sure that the historic district is not further compromised and for staff to reach out to the state historic preservation officer to ask more about infill and compatible infill development.
Right. I would expect staff to want to do that, regardless of whether we direct them to do it, because they want to learn more about this district and what the state has to say about it.
And I'm not proposing that we don't go to the state, but maybe we go to the state in a way that we're not taking this project to the state and saying, "Hey, give us advice on this specific project. Give us some more information on how we handle our district." And I'd also like to know, because I think we've discussed this during my term on the planning commission, and I know we fight it all the time, but being a historic district also has ramifications into the insurance and the flood plain and FEMA and all of those types of requirements as well. And from what I understand, it's critical that we maintain the historic district so that we can maintain Capitola Village as it is today, where it is today.
Isn't it true that if it's an historic district, you don't have to raise it up on, you know, the habitable space to be on the second floor, is that true? You know, because that's one thing that could really change the village. If it fell out of historic, out of a historic district, and there were to be some kind of a disaster in part of it, it seems like all of those homes might have to go up. I'm not sure I'm right on this, to a second.
You're talking FEMA guidelines.
FEMA guidelines, yeah. And I think, I'm thinking that what you're talking about is that historic preservation, the historic designation usurps those, you know, it stands above those.
Well, there was a time when, actually Ron and I made a trip to Washington DC to speak to the FEMA people, and we were trying to get a historical designation between the trestle and the village along the river there. And, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in that case, we were told that even with the historical designation in the flood plain, if those buildings were destroyed or burned down, they couldn't put residential on the first floor when they were rebuilt.
So what about this?
That had more to do, more to do with being in a hundred-year flood zone than anything else.
Right. And so how would this particular project, I mean, why can they take this?
This block, this block building is not gonna wash away.
That's in the ocean inundation area.
I think-
Totally different area.
The FEMA regulations wouldn't apply to projects which are, you know, have additions or remodels. I think it's when you're doing new construction or replacement that you have to comply and get it out of the flood zone.
I would claim ignorance on knowing what would cause the state to take a historical designation away. I would hate to think a home built in 1964 that happens to be in that historic overlay area would cause that, but I guess maybe that's what we need to find out.
I might be able to offer some more information on that from my previous work. As incremental changes take place within a historic district, and typically, the reason here why you have that odd shape around your district, keeping certain buildings out, is so that you have a majority of homes that really represent a picture in time of these original homes on Lawn Way. They, the home on the far left here was not included in the district because it would kind of tip this, you know, once you start introducing things that are not contributory, it starts to tip the scales. As you have incremental changes within the district, and there's a home straight right across from 110 that's non-contributory, it has the mass and scale of a historic home. But I think because of some, the modifications that have been made to that home over time is why, and I'm not 100% sure, but I'm guessing from observing, that that's why that home is non-contributory. So over time, it's those little changes that single homes can come off your district. And when someone goes through the district in the future, and the sightings change, the materials have changed, additions have changed, the rooftops, those type of things, you start to compromise the authenticity of your district. And that's when Chippewa can come in, the state historic preservation officers, and say, "You know what? When an individual goes through your district, it doesn't have that, it's not authentic." And at that point, you can, you can either make modifications to your district to bring back the true history of it and take off non-contributory additions and bring it more to an authentic state, or at that point, you can decide that, you know, we don't want the national, we'd rather not be a part of a national district, and we can have, take it down a tier and just have a local designated district that doesn't meet the national standards anymore.
So what is it that triggers that state review or consideration?
You know, here in California, you have an extra layer because of SEQA that all these historic buildings are protected in that, one, within your local municipal code, if they're making any modifications to the historic, it has to come before this board. But also, in order to get the SEQA exemption, it has to meet the Secretary of Standards, interior standards, to move forward with the project. So you have really good regulations here to prevent that occurring from the, your existing historic structures, because you have those in place at the local level and the state level. But it's within these, you know, here, I think within Lawn Way, you don't have vacant lots that can be a struggle within historic districts. You don't have, you know, if you turn the Lawn Way portion into this and started changing the site, then that could take it off of the list. But there's, you have a lot of protection in place within Capitola, especially within this district.
I think we're maybe a little far afield of the conceptual approval here, but I think it's probably good information. And I'm not sure what we want to do to kind of bring this back to getting some direction for Mr. Lindicky, who has his hand up. Yes, Mr. Lindicky, what would you like to add?
Well, appreciate, let me make some additional comments. I think the one thing that's sorely lacking here, and I'm really kind of sorry to get to this point, is that there's no consideration here for the property owner, who did not want this building to begin with. This is not what they wanted when they reconstructed, and the house was condemned. It was condemned by the city, it was taken down, it was gonna be rebuilt to the standards that was existing before it was condemned. The city mandated, and whether it was the fire district or the city, in my recollection, and I've been around as long as you guys, this is a voluntary fire department, so I'm not sure which fire district you're talking about when they say that they were the ones who dictated this building to be built. My understanding was the city. I thought this was a great compromise, and there was a considerable amount of time spent designing the building to conform with what the existing structures on Lawn Way looked like. The upper deck on this building, again, has been habitable by the family for a number of years. And I thought this was a good compromise during the story and a half. We had to talk Mrs. Kepman into doing a story and a half, or at least considering a story and a half, in order to do the project. Getting the state involved, now we're gonna have the state dictate what the property owner is to build, if they want to build anything. And I think I can speak for Ms. Kepman. She didn't want to be here tonight because of the emotions that are involved and what she's had to deal with through the years. This is the white elephant on the block. She knows that because she hears it all the time. So I'm a little disappointed that there's no consideration here for Mrs. Kepman and what the city has put her through way back in 1964. So that's sorely missed, and I'm sorry that I have not heard that consideration here this evening. And again, we, you know, tried to portray the story and a half as being a compromise that would be good for the city, to get rid of what's currently there, and provide her with the living area that she wants for her kids when they come and visit her on the weekends. And to get off this track, and now we're going to the state and get their feedback and what they're gonna dictate that be built here, and again, I can speak for Ms. Kepman, it won't happen. You're gonna be looking at this building, it will stay in the family. And we were trying to get some direction, and again, be a compromise, to right or wrong, the way I see it. I've been, like you guys, I've been in the city for a long, long time. And I've seen the changes that have been made, and I'd love to be able to do something to contribute to Lawn Way that I think is a great compromise for both the city and for Ms. Kepman. And I would like some, you know, some type of concrete feedback. Again, it's an expensive proposition, and I appreciate the guidelines that were put in place and the ability to come and try to get some conceptual recommendations from the planning commission in order to move forward or not. So I'm hoping to get something a little bit more concrete than, you know, what's been presented.
Well, I can tell you, for me personally, I support the story and a half. What I would like to see is some historical characteristics in the siding and in the windows.
Right. I understand. And I'd like to hear something similar from the rest of the commission.
And I could also give you support for change. I'm curious what the original structure looked like, to be honest with you. And I don't know if, obviously, she owned the building back when it was destroyed, I take it. So maybe she would have that to try to bring some of that character into, characteristics into it, but-
Yeah, like the one right next door to it.
I could, I could support, obviously, making some change there. I don't think a 1964 structure that, whether it's the fire department or not, was involved, really helps the historical perspective of that area.
Well, you heard me earlier, I'm for the story and a half. I disagree with you on the fire district, but that's okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
It's good to disagree. I can remember where-
From Ms. Kepman's standpoint, it was the city, but again, that, I'm not gonna split that.
It was probably the city with the recommendation of the fire district.
You know, what I, what I see here is, I think everybody's hit on a little bit of what happened. You know, we saw it going, maybe the way of the- You know, we saw it going, maybe the way of the Kepmans and, and some rather large buildings that were inside the other bungalows that came down. But conceptually, I don't want to go to the state any more than you do, but I'm hearing from staff that even if we're given a conceptual approval, they're going to weigh in on, on something. And I think that's taking home rule to Sacramento and they don't know what the citizens of Capitola want. I think these five people here know better what the citizens of Capitola want than somebody at the historical level or at the federal level or anybody at FEMA or anyplace else, but, you know, the buildings that we're pointing to on the left that are the two-story ones in the drawing on the board, you know, does anybody remember them when they didn't, weren't two stories and had the same roof design as the one to the right? Because I do.
I do too. I built the, I built the second one.
And, and you know, so we've allowed this and then we came along and we stiffened the rules and now we've got ourselves boxed into this cornered kind of thing.
Well, you know, the other point I'd like to make here too is that, you know, when the historic district is made and those lines were drawn, you know, I'm not quite sure how that determination's made, but quite literally that this house should never have been included in that. I mean, you can see the outline of that district and this should have never been included in that, quite literally.
It's not contributing.
So, you know, Ms. Kepman had no, you know, input in being included in this district. And again, as you can see, and I think that anybody looking at this thing, that they would be in agreement to that. So she's in the catch 22 and again, we tried to purvey this to Ms. Kepman is this would be, you know, good for the city and good for Ms. Kepman in doing the story and a half. Her ideal house would be the two-story that was approved, you know, back and again, I'm not quite sure the date, I think it was in the early 70s. And again, that's, you know, we are where we are and we're trying to, trying to get something approved, you know, from, that would be beneficial to both.
Okay. Gary, thank you. Well, you've heard from three of us now. I guess he's looking for your feedback.
I feel more comfortable if we were giving our feedback without the applicant standing up.
Oh, that's fine.
Thank you. Go ahead, Linda.
Well, I'm not opposed to the story and a half. I would like to see some more articulation, if you will, in the roof line, the way that it, that it looks from Lawn Way. My earlier comments about the perfect storm, I completely acknowledge that the, the property owner back in 60, it was a terrible situation and I wasn't here. And one of the reasons that I'm involved in the city today is hopefully to have an influence to make sure that that never happens again, because I think it's awful what happened. I would like to find ways to make findings to be able to change it that wouldn't jeopardize the district and I would like to better understand how we can protect that district because it does, I do believe, mean a lot in a lot of different ways that we're not maybe as up to speed on as we should be. The other thing that I didn't bring up earlier and I want to bring it up now, I was looking at wood versus cement fiber because I know that's an issue and I am a big proponent of cement fiber in this environment. I have it on my house, I have it on both of my houses. And it's a look and feel kind of thing and when I read the Secretary of Interior Standards, it said that wood is frequently an essential component of historic buildings because it can be easily shaped by sawing, sanding, planing, carving, gouging, it's used for the architectural features. And these wooden features, both functional and decorative, are often important in defining the historic character of the building. Cement fiber wasn't, hasn't been around for a really long time and it's come a long way in its look and feel. So I have on my house cement fiber shingles that look exactly like the redwood shingles that I took off of my house in the first place. So I would really like to, to look at the cement fiber question from a positive light and not say you have to have wood because wood is just, it's a huge burden to keep it up. And cement fiber takes much less maintenance but can protect and doesn't burn as bad as wood and it's got a lot of benefits. So I would be a proponent for the, the cement fiber issue. I would like to see the gables run the other direction simply because I think that feels more historic, but if I were sitting here with the plan in front of me, I wouldn't deny it because of that.
So I'm going to ask again, I know we're not having to find, make findings tonight, but if we approve this in concept and they come back with, with a proposal, we will have to make findings for those, for that second half story. And I'm curious about how we would do that based on this circumstance. So we have to say this is a unique circumstance and I understand these folks have been through a lot of unique things in this particular district, but what is, what could be unique about this particular application that would say to us, now they deserve more than anybody else in that district, they deserve that extra half story? And I'm open, you know, tell, tell me, I just don't know what it would be. What is it about this that makes them, it's okay for them to have it but nobody else? Because, because they had to put in a cement house? I don't know the answer to it. I'm not being snide, I just really want to know.
I understand where you're coming from. And you want us, want somebody to say, it's a damn eyesore the way it is.
Is that enough? Is that a finding enough?
Yeah, yeah, that's not a, not a reason, you know.
No. Gail, one suggestion would be that it is the only home in this district that has a flat roof, so every other home has a roof and maybe in your.
How does that give us, I mean, I, you know, I mean, I think unanimously, we would say, if they came in with a single floor, we'd say, no problem, you've got it, you know, but it's this, it's the additional height. So you're saying because people have been standing on that roof, now we're going to, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, but, I mean, you could make a support for a roof pitch and it's up to you to what degree you, if you want them to be able to, you know, I see what you're saying, because within this.
It's like telling the state you're not going to live in the pitch of the roof, but.
No, well.
But you're going to.
Yeah, you could limit it to the, you know, how the other structures in the district are so that it isn't as high, you know, the difference between the.
Well, I feel comfortable with that, that maybe that's a compromise.
And this, and I do think it's the wall height here that's pushing this ridge line up higher, so if the wall height were a little bit lower, this ridge line would come down and then your guidance could be that it, that it relates, you know, is compatible with the surrounding buildings and their roof pitches rather than exceeding the ridge line of the other buildings surrounding it.
Thank you, but I really would like an answer and have, and have that articulated now because if we don't articulate that now and we have problems in the future, we've gotten these poor folks further along in the process without really understanding how we can make findings for this.
I think maybe the question is, if we conceptually approved the idea that we would like to change the roof line, like to change this structure to be more historical in nature, can the staff find findings that would satisfy the state?
It would not open the door for everybody else.
Yeah, yeah. Could we somehow tie it to the uniqueness of this being the only structure within the district that really is the big sore thumb?
You know, I, I wouldn't want to comment about the state's perspective of it, but I think we can probably identify some unique distinct characteristics about this particular house that would distinguish it from some others. Maybe not all of the rest that are in that district, but most of them.
So how does that then give us the handle on the additional height and volume of it? I understand how that says we can change it, but how do those characteristics that stand today that are such sore thumbs give us a handle to increase the volume of the house?
You know, I think Commissioner Welch brought up a good point earlier when he read part of the guidelines where it talks about trying to improve some of the structures that are down in the village to better characterize the historic features down there. I think you can look at language like that to help make findings, but it does get tricky not to set some type of precedence.
Right. Did you say you found the plans from 1960 for the original plans submitted that were approved? Or Gary, did you say, I'm sorry, did someone say they had a copy of those plans?
I don't have them with me tonight.
And I, I don't, you know, and I don't want to be in a position where we're trying to make a wrong right because, but I think that's got a, and then some credibility to going back to a time when the findings would have been sufficient then had it not been for, and whether it was in your eyes, a volunteer fire department, it's a district, but the fire marshal still has to sign off and I could see very well how he built a fireproof house and be involved in that process. And, and now he ended up with this, what you're calling as an elephant there in this historical overlay district. So I, for me, I think I could find some comfort in knowing what was originally approved and, and trying to get those historical qualities and features put back into a structure there. But I share the concern about the too much mass and going to two stories, I just don't see how that would, you know, how I could justify that. A higher pitched gable roof that allows an area for a second, you know, half story, I think that is something I could be, live with, especially knowing that at one point prior to this historical district got to be made, the plans were approved and somehow it would have arrived.
Linda, you want to weigh in?
Didn't I already just weigh in?
We don't want to.
I think there's clear guidance that there's support.
Yeah, I think they'll leave whatever we want to be.
A story and a half, but once the design comes in, I think you work through the, the real specifics of that, once we have a, an application in front of you, do you feel?
To be fair and clear, I am not convinced that a story and a half is, I would like to hear what the state says and I agree, maybe we don't send this, we call them and say, you know, hypothetically, we've got an applicant who might want to put, you know, and this is what the house looks like and it's non-contributory, you know, how do you feel about that? And just get a little feel about it, you know, because in the long run, we are going to have to do a, what is it, a DPR on this? Is it, is it a DPR? When this comes in as an application, there's going to have to be an historic DPR on this because that, is it a DPR? Is that the?
It's not a historic.
It's so long since I've been.
It's a review by a historian and I don't know the correct term for it.
An architectural historian.
An architectural historian.
But remember, this building has no historical value.
I have a feeling since it's in this district and it does have a history, I think it may still need to have that.
Yeah, I'll have to look into that, Gail. I know for a historic, it would, but I'm not sure for infill.
I don't either.
I have a question. The dozen, the, the rule that says that it can't be two-story, where did that come from? Did that come from us in our guidelines or is it somehow tied into the district? Because two doors down, there is a two-story, so I.
It's the guidelines.
It's in the guidelines.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in the guidelines.
I think you're saying, where did we get those guidelines? Did we get those guidelines from state guidelines and we sort of took some of them from the state?
That's what I was.
You know, I don't know.
Well, Mr. Ruth, or Mr. Chair, the staff seems to feel that they understand the consensus, but there were some other questions that were asked in the staff report. And I found one of them really interesting and it's not a big issue, but years ago, we directed all the water from the, the roofs to the alleys, not to Lawn Way because the facility in Lawn Way used to flood every year. And of course, this, this one here, the new, the building inspector says now he wants them to come to the front. And if you look at the structures that have been remodeled down there, they are all bringing the water to the front, to the lawn area. But that's a, that's a departure from what.
But the drainage was changed down there after a long time.
That's right, yeah, yeah. And the, I want to just make one other comment because you made comment with regards to the type of material used on the siding. I'm not, I mean, Linda has a nice house, but it's not my cup of tea, you know, type of thing, so I'm not sure that I'm locked into that type of siding. I just want you to know that. I would wait until we had some project before us to say that this fits within the district.
And we did use it, I believe, on the, the new lighthouse structure at the corner of, you know, we did use that on that.
And if you look, if you look where any of the shrubbery has come up against it, it just looks horrible.
I'll look at that.
Okay. Mr. Lindicky, do you have enough guidance to proceed? I know it's pretty vague and been all over the map.
I understand the predicament, believe me, I appreciate it. And again, it'll counsel with Mrs. Kepman and with staff and check and find out what the next step in direction might be.
Okay.
Share the input.
Okay. Great.
Before we leave, you know, staff was really concerned about that, what is called the eastern view or the, the small Lawn Way side and the height of that wall and stuff like that. If you look at all the photographs, the Kepman's present building is about a foot and a half, two foot, a higher than where any of the second story start or anything else, and I wonder if we could kind of send some direction to the applicant here tonight that, look at that aspect of it also.
All right. I understand that.
You're basically getting rid of two bricks or something.
I understand. I can see the doctor writing.
Okay. Gary, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hope you can proceed with Mrs. Kepman.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item six, items for discussion without a public hearing. We have a review of draft conditions for approval for residential. Appears we have, looks like 20 conditions plus a couple more for the secondary units.
Yep.
Katie?
Thank you. So this was, we wanted to take this before you as a work session item to just discuss standard conditions of approval. Well, in the coming months, we'll be coming forth with different applications of this for conditional use permits, historic conditions, just, and commercial as well. The draft you have in front of you, we edited to include clarity of process. We also wanted to add specific conditions that related to the different city departments that an applicant actually meets with and has to get different approvals from throughout the process so they're well aware of the steps. And also require all changes to approve plans to be documented in writing and on paper and with an approval stamp from staff, whether or not it needs to go to planning commission for that approval or can be approved at the staff level, but documenting all changes prior to occurring in the field. So with that, we thought we'd just have an open discussion, any items that you want to talk about. I've got them all available for us to look at and if you want to lead the discussion and tell me which number you'd like to focus on or any that are missing or you'd like deleted or.
Well, certainly sounds like it's tightening up the procedures and making people more knowledgeable of what they have to do. What about street openings? Is that, I, I didn't notice that in here.
Are you talking about if they have to do utility work in the street?
Yeah, if you're digging up the street.
Do they even need an encroachment permit?
Yeah, I didn't see that one in here.
It is in there, but.
Is it in here?
It is in there.
I read them, but I didn't recall it.
13.
It's 13?
It doesn't deal with utilities, but it says if they're going to work in the.
City road right of way.
Yeah.
An encroachment permit.
Yeah, okay, there it is.
I, I had a, a couple of questions. And number three, which is a single liner, so it's not going to be really tough. At the time of building permit submittal, and I'm not quite sure what that is, I know when you pull a building permit after you've got approval from the planning commission and the rest of it, you want a cover sheet that has all the conditions. Okay. The conditions will, will be on the permit of approval because you always have conditions and findings of every item that comes before us. So I, I'm kind of trying to get at what you were getting at. Are you saying to us that in the past, because we've had in the past two sets of plans that you want to make? What are you trying to do?
I think that's part of it and I don't think it's a problem unique to Capitola. I think, you know, by putting the conditions on a plan set, the architect has it, the builders have it, the guys in the field that have them, the conditions are right there. There's really no excuse not to know what the requirements of the project are.
So it's when, after approval and when the plans are being submitted to the, the building official, that's when you want it.
Correct.
Okay, okay. Because it sounded almost like it was backwards, you know, I hear. And then down in, in, I think it's, I think it's nine and 10 could be combined. What you're doing is really saying prior to actions of a, no, I'm sorry, wrong one. I, no, this is to get, yes, get them to sign, everybody that needs to sign off on it, sign off on it. And I, I can see that, but it's, almost sounds like we made two conditions to fill up paper space.
Which two are you talking about, Ron?
Which?
Nine and 10. Nine and 10. The, the plan is, no, that's not the one. I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one.
Number nine.
Is, hang on, I'm, I'm way off. The one I was questioning was over on the backside, and it was the, the prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy, which would be 16 and 17. I know what we're trying to do, we're, Gail and I and everybody else have been trying to get the size of the trees and landscaping and the rest of it, you know, said, but it's like you, you use two sections to get everything. Everything that's been approved must be in place before you have occupancy. So are we, by getting this specific, if we leave something off, does it just give them a hole to, to jump through?
You know, in, in prior reports that I've read, there has been conditions tied to the trees specifically, and I think that's because there is that specific ordinance, and when it comes before the Planning Commission, there's usually a discussion when trees are being removed, and I just, I'm thinking of Burger King when we talked about another tree along the front edge. But I've seen that repeatedly in staff reports. We could take it out, it's definitely, it would have to comply with 17.
I'm not suggesting taking it out.
Yeah.
I'm suggesting that we have, we want to see all these things, and you're right on track here, but really what we want to say in this guide, so to speak, is that all conditions of approval must be met before occupancy can occur, or an occupancy permit can be. And to, what I was so scared of that we might, afraid of, scared is not the good word, afraid of, was that we might forget one of the things, you know, by listing them individually here, a blanket comment that, you know, you've got to meet all your conditions of approval in order to receive an occupancy permit, and that would be deemed by you and the building inspector.
I had a, I would like, it used to be that you had to complete all landscaping prior to getting an occupancy permit, and I'd like to see it state that in here. And I think what Ron's saying is he would like to see other things stated specifically rather than all, you know, just, or maybe I'm getting you exactly the opposite.
The opposite, yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make sure that, you know, somewhere in this document, it says that, you know, all landscaping must be completed before, as well, or, you know, I don't know, but it just seems like that's the one thing that falls through the cracks. And the one thing that I see happen is that the applicant will squeak into PG&E and get PG&E to turn on their, their power, and before there's a, a final, and I, we've had this happen over and over again.
Those are two ongoing problems.
But actually, there, it's a necessity a lot of times. So with PG&E, you can neither get gas or electric turned on prior to, in my case, we chose gas because we, we were putting hardwood floors in, and the hardwood floors, they want to cure them place before they put them down. Well, you have to have a way of making that happen. So we could go off the, the power from the temporary power we had to, to get the furnace on, but I need the gas to do that. So some of those things are a necessity, I think that we, we need to be careful of. The landscaping, my, my issue with landscaping, when I, when I built my house, was I posted a bond, because I wanted to get in there, and so the bond required me to do it a certain amount of time, and if I didn't do it, then the city was taking my money and going to do it for me. But what it did do is get me out of another rental and all these, so it was saving me money to allow me to get in there and do that ahead of time. And I don't know that, I, I, and I don't know, maybe, Gail, that you're seeing the different houses that I haven't seen, but most of the ones I've seen come through since I've been on the commission anyway, they're either happening within a short duration or prior to getting in. So I don't know that that's a, a big issue. I know for me, I wanted my money back, right? So I had six months to get my landscaping, irrigation, everything in, and it, you know, it took me a month and a half or so to, to do that, because I did it myself. But, so I don't know that it needs to be any more specific than it already is. I think the city does a pretty good job of staying on top of it.
Yeah, I, I think I would like to add a landscaping condition, in part just because I think it's good for an applicant to know everything that they need to do and, and the timing by which they need to do it. But your point's well taken, too. We do allow landscaping to be completed after certificate occupancy through a bond. So I think we would state that, that they either complete the installation or post a bond to the city satisfaction.
That could be a condition of approval.
Right.
So it would already be in there.
Yeah.
But I think that would be a good addition.
Okay. And then, well, the other thing having to do with landscaping is that we used to see landscaping plans and approve them on, on the plans at the time of the application. And that's not happening anymore, and I wondered if we all feel comfortable with that, or do we, I mean, it's basically, this is saying it's leaving it up to our staff to handle landscaping in our community. And I'm not sure I feel really 100%. We have a lot of turnover in our staff over the last few years. That's nothing to do with you guys, it's just, you know, it's other people coming in, telling, you know, telling everybody how they can do their landscaping, and it does have a lot to do with the way our community looks.
Now, you know, number 20 here with regards to garbage cans, we have an ordinance that requires it in the residential district, so you're, you're just making this as a statement. Is that the idea?
Yeah, in, in some cases, I mean, their ordinance requirements are legally required, but I think there's some benefit to have it in writing, that an applicant walks away and they know everything they have to do. When they come back, they're not surprised, and we say, well, you also got to go do this and that.
Yeah, it's good to put it in that, because that ordinance has never been.
Transparency is part of the goal.
Made very public.
And I, I'd like to just.
I like the no-surprise concept.
I mean, another way to handle it, I, I've done it differently in other jurisdictions where they're just simply notes, it's not a condition, but at the end of the day, you have to do it, so.
Um, Gail, did you get resolved on your, so?
So, Gail, one of the.
I asked how you guys feel about it.
Oh, I'm supportive.
It is a requirement of the application. What, now I'm flipping back to landscaping, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So back to landscaping. It is a, it is an application requirement. We do require it as part of the complete application, so from here on out, you should be reviewing those at Planning Commission.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to get a landscaping plan before anything comes before us. Not, not a statement that says the landscaping plan will be presented to the Community Development Director or that office, you know, because then we don't see it, you know, type of thing.
So as long as you say that, I feel all right with the terminology. And number six, it says a final landscape plan will be, will have to be issued, you know, approved before a building permit is issued. As long as the word "final" is in there, and you're not thinking that it's the only one that was.
No, typically, they come in with a preliminary or conceptual landscape plan, and it gets finalized, and there's oftentimes minor adjustments in the irrigation.
You have to have real vision for.
Right.
I just thought that silence made consensus.
And I, I've got to put out my bugaboo right here now, and it's in here. Does anybody have problems with the hours of construction?
Everybody has a prob, GPAC, everybody, in everything I sit on, everybody has a problem.
Well, it's in here again, and this is the time to give some staff some feedback. Ah, it's, if I read this correctly, it's 7:30 in the morning to, what is it, 9:00 at night on weekdays, and then it's, what, sometime later on Saturdays, and no construction on Sundays, so that leaves kind of the homeowner out that's doing his own project. And I'd like to see whatever we do really consistent and stick to it, because, and then the other one I want to throw out real quick, because I didn't hear anything from anybody else. The idea that the permits run for two years. We've got this place up here on Capitola Road that's been running 10 years.
Since 199, no, since 1997.
Oh, my God. But anyway.
Maybe 98.
It'll be 20 years in three years, or four years, you know? And I understand that people come forward, and then the economy takes it, and that would have been an excuse. But when the economy struggled, you could get things built for half the price of what happened when the economy was booming. So that's not even a good thing, and I, how, I guess my real question is, how carefully do we track these permits?
Well, for building permits, it's really regulated by the state code, and I've heard some of these complaints since I've been here from neighbors that, you know, that the person down the street from me has been working on their house for four years, can't you do something about it? The answer is no, as long as they're making some very minor progress. All they have to do is show that they're making progress, call for an inspection, and every time they do that, they get a six-month extension by state code.
But this is a little different, what you have in here.
This one here is like a zoning.
I guess the prime example is the 38th Avenue salvage yard.
Right.
Came in, we gave approval, the time's running, two years from now, he has to come back and make a whole new application because that permit expires, you know.
Within, within 24 months, they got established use and reliance.
I think that's really a long time to, you know, usually you have your money, your financing and everything else before you come in with a plan and stuff.
I, you know, I think it often depends on the scale of the project, too. I mean, to me, something like the 38th Avenue senior apartments probably should have more time than a single-family residence would, but that two-years limit is in the code right now. So in order to change it, you know, the same thing with the noise standards and for construction hours. We could do something about it, but we'd have to amend the ordinance, which we'll be looking at probably next year, and I think these will be good topics to discuss.
How does that compare to other jurisdictions, that, that two-year?
Two years was, I think, the standard, the last job I had, but, you know, there's interesting case law in setting use and reliance. What I understand is it's basically spending any money. If you draw engineering plans, a courts have often held that they've established use and reliance, and that permit's valid at that point. So there's kind of tricky legal grounds, and I think our authority is a little bit undermined in that regard.
I have two things. Item number four, question, is there a typo in the Public Works standard detail, S N P S T R M, and in the final line, it says B M P S T R M?
I'll, I'll find out which one is correct from the public work.
Okay. Thank you.
Maybe you should tell us what they are.
I think SMP is stormwater management plan.
I know it is.
And it looks like storm with, I don't know, I don't know.
But it's SMP versus BMP, I think.
So I think that B is wrong.
The BMP is best management practices.
Oh.
Oh, so there might be two of them.
I, I think they're probably correct, but I, I unfortunately don't know the STRM, although I assume it has something to do with the storm.
Cool. And the other thing I brought to Katie earlier, the one thing, when I read through these that I didn't see was how we prevent modifications from happening during construction that meet building code, and so the building inspector is approving them, and then the planning people come back in and say, ah, but it doesn't match the plan.
I think that's an issue of communication and an internal procedure. We've had discussions. I think we're all on the same page, that when the building inspectors go out, if there's any exterior modifications at all, to bring it to the planner's attention and, and let the contractor know that it could be an issue and get us together, so that we can handle it before it gets too far and we're beyond a point of no return.
But shouldn't it be a little stronger than that, in that if the building inspector goes out there and, and he sees a modification that doesn't match the plans that were approved, then there's a stop-work order?
They absolutely have the authority to stop work, and, you know, there's some discretion and subjectivity there, you know, depending on how great the alteration would be.
Can I ask a question only? On number two, I understand the building for, for new construction or remodel or anything like, but including interior modifications. For example, I do know that if you change your water heater, you're supposed to get a permit, stuff like that, but there are modifications that you can do in a house that are not structural, they are cosmetic, and how is that addressed?
I, I think that's a good point. We can clarify that.
I have a couple of others. Under number six, can we strengthen the language about, in the irrigation system, so that they're clear that they do have to have one? All it says is that it's details of the irrigation system, and they could say, well, I want to put a sprink, you know, I just want to have a hose and a sprinkler and put it out there when I feel like it, kind of thing. Are we saying that we are going to require drip or a certain type of installed irrigation? Where do we stand on that now as far as our policies and?
I believe it's a requirement when the application comes in, but whether or not we hold them to that of requiring an irrigation system at the time of, I'll do more research.
I'm pretty sure the Water District's going to want us to do that in the future anyway. This might be a really good time to just, you know, codify that in some way. I'm hoping it doesn't require it at all. Uh, yeah, or, yeah. Yeah, like, turn it all off. You have to have it, but you have to turn it off. And then on number 13, we've had a couple of problems with construction contractors that park a big truck in, on our small streets in our area, and they use that for their equipment. They use that, they, they just park it there for the duration of the job. Big white trucks with the big, you know, cab in the back. Can that, is that included in that number 13?
I don't think it would be.
Can they do that?
I mean, you certainly can't set up a staging area in the public right-of-way, but, you know, I'm sure you can park your truck and, and have your tools in the truck and run back and forth.
And then, okay, all right, I don't want to, I don't want to pursue that, I just wanted to find out about it.
Remember harbor lights, we put in that specific condition that they couldn't.
Right.
Use the right-of-way for their equipment.
Right. Or they had to notify and pay or whatever. And number 16, the last sentence is required replacement trees shall be the same size, species, and planted, same species as was taken out?
It's on the plans, is.
On the plan, on the plans.
Is what the plan says.
Okay. I just wanted to double-check that. And then the last thing I've got is on the last, under secondary dwellings, number C, the administrative review or the architectural insight review permit. Does Arch Insight give a permit?
No.
No, it'd be an approval.
Well, no, they don't give an approval either.
Recommendation.
Arch Insight doesn't give any approvals.
Yeah, just recommendation.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I've got.
I think what that should be is a design permit, right?
I think so.
Yeah.
That may be something.
That's like under secondary dwelling.
I either typed in incorrectly or a modification we need to make to the code in the future.
And on number nine, it talks about having notification of the Water District, but we don't really talk about that on the secondary dwelling unit, which they're obviously very interested in.
This is good.
And we'll, of course, have lots of opportunities to adjust them as we go, but we thought we'd start here and make improvements as, as we go.
Right.
They look good. Sounds like we're on the right track.
Yeah.
Okay, then, and nothing else on this item, then we'll move to the manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few items. Last month, we did bring an item to the City Council for the A-frame or sandwich board signs in the village. The City Council elected to retain the ordinance that allows the business improvement area signs that they authorized probably about 15 months ago, and they did elect to pursue a complaint-based enforcement protocol. So if staff gets a complaint, we'll enforce, otherwise the business owners can continue to use those down in the village. Community, or the General Plan Advisory Committee has a meeting next Tuesday, November the 12th, at 7:30 PM. That'll be the second meeting that we've had to go over the comments we received on the draft general plan. Following that meeting on November 21st at 7 o'clock, of course, you will have a joint special meeting with the City Council to offer staff some guidance on some of the key policy issues before we release it for full public review and put the EIR out.
I have read the draft general plan, and do you want, would you prefer that I show up at the next meeting of the GPAC and give my concerns, or would you want me to hold them until we have the joint meeting? There, there mainly, in fact, I, I like how general the general plan is, if I can say that, but there are some very specific words being used in the general plan that may not exist in 20 years, and that's what I'm having problems with.
I would encourage you to contact me anytime. You may also want to take a look, we just posted all the comments we received on the draft on the. We just posted all the comments we received on the draft on the plancapitol.com website today. Some of those comments may have been addressed, I'm not sure, but I'd be happy to talk to you. And then, of course, you're always welcome at the GPAC meetings.
Where's the GPAC meeting on the table?
It's in here.
It's here.
Okay. Anything else, Rich?
That's it.
Okay. Any Commissioner Communications?
So I have one question. On the online agenda, there was an item to nominate a member of the planning commission to the traffic and it wasn't on the green one?
Oh, that's right. I have an old agenda.
Were we going to do that?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I have an old agenda.
That's all right.
So, yeah, we, as you know, I resigned from the traffic and parking committee and we need a nomination to fill that spot.[1737.01]